Okay, I call this committee of the whole to order. Is there any declaration of? Oh, same, Councilor Miller. Oh, look at it. You're quick. You got it right.
Before, I am going to declare a community interest regarding item six F. Report CCR-CW-13-19. Because I am determined that we are in this deal with the opposition or propose an opposition for that one.
Very good.
I will reduce myself and we'll get the item.
Very good, and you have a form to submit with respect to that? Yeah. Uh, Councilor Woodbury?
Yeah, I have a community interest with item six E. The healthcare funding. I'm a director for Southeast Grey Community Health Centre. So we'll deal with this thing. I hadn't volunteered to be on it and then realized I should.
Okay. And you've submitted the form as well?
I have.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Councilor Desai?
I will also have to declare a conflict on the same, um, on the same item for the same reason.
Six E?
And I haven't filled out a form, so is that in the drawer?
Okay, we'll get a form to you, sir. Yeah? You can go. It's the most we've ever had.
I know.
Okay, I think that's it. Um, I'm gonna suggest that we go to the consent agenda while we wait for the delegation. Our, our guests are here, but we were supposed to go at ten. We're a little early, so maybe we can deal with the consent agenda. So moving to item five. Is there anything that needs to be specifically addressed? Look to me, be fairly straightforward, three items, mostly communications. Seeing none, then I'm gonna look for a mover to approve those items. Moved by Councilor? Carlton. My, my brother is Carlton, that's his nickname, I should do better than that. And seconded by Councilor Clumpus. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? I'm gonna get it right one of these days. I promise. Okay, that is approved. Um, that didn't buy us a lot of time, did it? But I think we can proceed then with the delegation. I understand our guests are here, Rebecca Webb and Susan Harris. MPAC. Kevin is going to do the introductions, so come on up, folks.
Yes, so we have your official background, please. So we have the municipal control emissions and Susan Harris, the Director of Valuation and Customer Relations for MPAC. There are a delegation here today, an invite from County Council to come and provide an update on property tax assessment and to give some, some background of what MPAC does. And I'm committed to have a secure and opportunity to ask questions with MPAC. So it encourages them to take the time they need, as we have invited them here for that purpose.
Welcome.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Morgan Hicks and members of committee for including MPAC on the agenda today. We are delighted to be here. And I am just moving the mic a little closer to you. Can you hear me now? Yeah? Awesome. Okay. Just click through this.
Sorry.
Oh. So I am just one of many employees that work and live in your community. And we really benefit from your leadership. Our team is accountable to you, accountable to your municipalities as a whole, uh, to the property taxpayer industries, and of course, to the property owners in your community. And our valuation and municipal and stakeholder relation staff work very closely together as a team locally to ensure that we understand your communities and its needs. And with me here today, as mentioned, we have Susan Harris, who is the Director of Valuation and Customer Relations. And she's going to provide a little bit more information to all of you later on in the presentation. Um, we wanted to share today, Susan and I, information about MPAC, who we are, what we do, and how we can really work closely together to strengthen our communities. So I thought we might start with the property assessment system in Ontario. And to give you a little insight on that, and maybe to break the ice a little bit, I thought we might ask a question here and there of each of you. And maybe that'll encourage you later on in the presentation to feel comfortable to ask us some questions. I know you may have some. So how many players or parties are there in the property assessment and taxation system in Ontario? Is anybody familiar with that?
Where's your parties?
Is this in the presentation? Is this a pass or fail?
It's a pass or a fail. Do you know the answer?
Four.
Four. There's four key players involved in the property assessment and taxation system in Ontario. There is, of course, the property owner, in which the system really revolves around them. Then there is the provincial government. And they really set all of the legislation and the rules that all of us must abide by. So whether it's a municipality, whether it's MPAC or the property owner. They're also responsible for setting the education tax rates across the province of Ontario. And they're also responsible for the Assessment Review Board, which is an independent tribunal governed by the Ministry of Attorney General. And they hear all of the assessment appeals across the province of Ontario from our taxpayers and property owners. Then of the course, there's the municipality, so yourselves, who are responsible for determining the revenue requirements for your municipalities in order to provide the services that really allow our, our communities to thrive. You, of course, do that by setting your tax rates and you collect the property taxes. And you do that based on assessments, and that's where we come into play. So we're responsible for assessing every property within the property of Ontario. We're also responsible for setting the property tax classification on each property. So that looks as whether the property is residential, whether it's commercial, industrial, or maybe it's farmland. So we classify every property and we do that in accordance with the Assessment Act and any legislation or regulations passed by the Ontario Government. And so now to have a look at the property assessment update cycle.
Just one second. Would you prefer that questions be at the end or?
Um, I'm happy to take some questions now if, if that's easier for all of you.
So, whoever.
Yes, I'm just wondering, you talked about municipalities there, and we have a dual system here. We have upper tier and lower tier. Now, a lot of your work is obviously done at the lower tier level in terms of getting advice on building permits, changes in use, uh, that kind of stuff. So you could, you kind of, what is the division there, like between, um, upper tier and lower tier in terms of your involvement with the community?
Um, in, with development in the community or?
Well, MPAC, it deals with both the upper tier and the lower tier. Like, what percentage of your involvement is at the upper tier level and what is at the lower tier?
So we work with every municipality, whether it's an upper tier or lower tier. And we dedicate whatever time is required in order to answer your questions. We provide all of the same tools to both the upper tier and the lower tier. So we have Municipal Connect, for example, which is a product tool that we provide and, and both the upper tiers and lower tiers have access to that. There's different products and services. The assessment role that we deliver to you, we deliver to the assessment, uh, we deliver that to the upper tier as well, just for the entire county, so that they can make their tax revenue and policy decisions as well.
If I can help, I, I, you and I have had these discussions before. I believe that Counselors, Counselor Soever's, um, point may be around, how much time do you spend in terms of the assessment process, uh, dealing with upper tiers versus the lower tiers? Is that helpful, Counselor Soever?
Yes.
Yeah, I know you and I talked about that before.
Yeah, a lot of the information that we receive regarding, um, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit later on in the presentation, on the information that we use that helps inform the values that we place on properties. And so there's lots of data that we collect.
Right.
And we collect a lot of that information from the lower tiers themselves. And building permits would be probably the most notable one.
Right.
Welcome. Okay. So the property assessment update cycle. So every four years, MPAC is legislatively required to update the assessments throughout the province of Ontario. And 2016 was the last time we had a province-wide assessment update. And you may recall, having received a property assessment notice, um, indicating what your value of your property was as of January first, 2016, and that value is currently being used for taxation purposes from 2017 through to 2020. And now looking ahead to 2020, we're going to have a new valuation date. And notices again will be sent out to property owners in your communities. And those values will be used for taxation purposes from 2021 through to 2024. And of course, in between those assessment updates, so 2016 in this case to 2019, we continually update the value on our properties. So if there's a change to a state and condition of a property, something physical that you can actually see. So if you, um, had vacant land and you built a new home, or you added a garage, those are going to be indications that we need to relook at the value of that property. And we add that value based on the valuation date of January first, 2016, to the assessment role that's delivered to you on an annual basis so that you can calculate your property taxes and benefit from that additional revenue. Now again, with a question for all of you. Now, does anybody know what the importance of this date is? January first, 2019? Other than being New Year's Day? Mayor McQueen? Correct, right. So January first, 2019 is the next valuation date in the province of Ontario. So all values will be going from the valuation as of 2016, January first, to, um, 2019, January first.
Three years thereafter? Is it every three or four years?
Um, it's two years preceding the assessment cycle. So the assessment cycle is 2021 to 2024, so that date is two years preceding that, which is 2019.
So the, so if it's January first, 2019, the next will be in two years or four years?
It will, well, the valuation will be four years from that of the twenty-sixth, or the 2019 date.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin?
Just a minute, I'll, just to, if during the assessment cycle there's a downturn in economy or something like that, you see that was the year nine, so quite, quite a change from what the assessment bias is now in the country downturn in markets. We do not change those assessment bias, they get phased in as they were at that point. They get corrected then with the next reassessment cycle, correct? And I just want to be clear on that, that just because market changes are happening during the cycle, a property owner would shouldn't, if this was to create stability and that's why it was spread out over four years, correct?
That's correct. Um, the province put in place phase in in order to create that stability for the taxpayer. And so your value of your property will always be based on that legislative date, regardless of whether the properties through that four-year cycle are going up and down. And that helps the property owner to be able to understand and know what's coming, right? And so now to have a look at the property assessment cycle. And this screen really helps put the linkages together for you. So it looks at the valuation date of January first, 2019. And then we have the notices, so the property assessment notices that will be mailed out. And actually, in your communities, we're looking at those being mailed out in May of 2020. And then those values will be in place for the 2021 to the 2024 taxation years. And just as we were speaking about, uh, those values are phased in, uh, based on provincial legislation in order to have that stability for the property owner. And this gives you a look at what that phase-in program, um, is. So to give you an example, if a property in your community was assessed as of January first, 2016 at 345,000, and that property, due to market changes from 2016 to 2019, increased to 375,000, that $30,000 difference is now going to be phased in over that four-year cycle. So the property owner will see an increase in their assessed value of $7,500 each and every year until 2024, when they will receive the full value of that property, the 375,000. And of course, any decreases in the assessment value? So if that property had decreased, the owner would receive the benefit of that decrease immediately. Decreases are not phased in. So a little bit of information about MPAC. So at MPAC, we know and understand that the assessments that we provide to you really are the foundation for your taxation system. And that you need those values to be current and accurate so that you can provide those services that are needed for your communities. And we take this role very seriously. I mean, we live and work in your communities, we're property owners and taxpayers, just like all of you. And as you can imagine, it is an enormous job. The properties are very diverse across the province of Ontario and even within your communities here. I mean, if you could look at the difference between some of the resort communities, maybe in, in Blue Mountain and the condominiums compared to some of our rural farm communities here in Gray County. So MPAC, uh, we are an independent, not-for-profit corporation, and we are fully funded by Ontario municipalities. Our assessments follow the Assessment Act and legislations and regulations by the Ontario Government. And we're governed by a Board of Directors. And they're made up of provincial representation, municipal representation, and taxpayer representation. And all of those representatives are appointed by the province of Ontario, by the Ministry of Finance. And currently, we have a thirteen-member Board of Directors. There are, um, seven municipal representatives, there are four taxpayer representatives, and there are two provincial representatives. Now, that number may change based on, on the provincial government, but currently we have thirteen. And the Board of Directors, Direction, really, Board of Directors really provides, um, direction and governance for our organization. And it's very similar to your, your council and your municipal structure. And, um, MPAC Board of Directors really provides that oversight, accountability, the efficiencies of how we do our operations. And we operate based on a committee structure as well. We have, um, three board committees. We have the Audit Committee, we have the Government and Human Relations Committee, and then we also have our Quality Assurance Committee, which really concentrates its time on ensuring the valuation, um, accuracy of our properties. Um, we are the largest assessment jurisdiction in North America, and we are, um, highly respected leaders in the assessment industry. There's about seventeen hundred or so employees across the province of Ontario. And they value or are responsible for valuing five million properties that comprise together about 2.78 trillion dollars in property values. So that is, um, an immense, uh, job. And as you can see from here, the assessment role that we delivered, uh, across the province of Ontario, that 2.78 trillion dollars, is mostly residential, that indicated by the sort of yellow portion of the donut there. And every year, we deliver this assessment role to municipalities across the province. And municipalities use this to collect their taxes. And last year, it was about 20 million in municipal tax, or sorry, 20 billion in municipal taxes and seven billion in education taxes. And so for every dollar of MPAC's levy or MPAC's cost, really supports a hundred dollars in municipal revenue back to you. And when we look here locally at Gray County, so the experts that are working and living in your community have determined that your assessment role is 19 billion dollars in the county as a whole. And you can see from the yellow side of, of this donut as well, about 70%, very similar to the province of Ontario as a whole, uh, is residential. But what is really unique to your community? And if you go back and you look at this slide, you'll see that the next largest section across the province of Ontario or property category is commercial. Now, when you look back here at Gray County, at about almost 17% of your assessment base is farmland. So that, that makes you unique. And it's important to us to understand the uniqueness of each one of your communities and, and how the assessment, uh, is important to your tax base. And back to some of the questions that Mayor Soever had earlier. We do a lot of, um, data reviews. So we're, we continually review the data that we have on the properties because we know that's integral in making sure that of the accuracy, um, the traceability and the transparency of the values that we place on the assessment role and deliver to the property owners. And we do that, um, through a lot of different sources. We get information from the province of Ontario, we get information from our local municipalities, and even from property owners. So we investigate sales, we get those from Terranet through the province. And every sale that transacts in the province of Ontario, we know about it. Uh, we also get building permits from all of your municipalities. And we really count on not only getting those permits in a timely basis, but also getting the updates for those permits. So how they're coming along, when occupancy is going to be happening, or if there's been some sort of a stall in that development and you're not going to see, um, any of those buildings happen for the next, you know, two or three years, should something like that occur. So it's really important that we have that open lines of communication. We also get a lot of information from rest, requests from reconsiderations and appeals that are happening, right? So people are questioning us about their property value, they're providing us with information about their property, and we update that. And so that we can make sure that every year, that information is current for your tax collection. Now, planning services is another area that we are really concentrating some of our efforts on. In 2017, we put together a property ser, or a planning services team. So we have a team of planners that are now helping our assessment professionals like Susan and look at, um, some of your official plans, uh, your zoning, and how that may play in affecting the valuation of properties in your communities. And so not too long ago, here in these council chambers, we met with, um, your local, uh, Planning Institute. And we gave them a presentation very similar to this one, a little bit more in-depth so that they understood how they're, what they're doing in the planning is affecting the value of the properties and how important it is to have it so that we can generate revenue for you. And so now, to help you better understand, um, a little bit about the work we do, Susan is going to come up here and she's gonna talk about how we assess properties.
Thanks, Becky, and good morning, everybody.
Morning.
So, um, I guess my role here this morning is to take you through what actually happens on the properties and how we assess the properties at large, um, to give you an indication of what we do and how we do it. So, first of all, I want to talk a little bit about what is current value assessment because I think it's a term that is confused fairly often. So a current value is the, um, the price that a willing seller would sell to a willing buyer when a property's been exposed to the open market for a reasonable amount of time. So what makes current value different than market value? Well, current value is at a specific point in time as legislated by the province. Currently, we're on a date of January first, 2019. Soon, we'll be moving to a valuation date of January first, 2020. Um, and we are working on that as we speak. But right now, we reflect the state and condition of a property today based on 2019 dollars. So what do we do when we get to a property? How do we decide how to value the property? Well, we use what's worthly, recognizes three approaches to value. Um, so the first approach to value is the direct comparison approach. And it's one that you're likely most familiar with. Um, if you were to go and buy a house, what would you do to determine what you would be willing to pay for that? You'd look at comparable properties and you'd say, okay, but that one had an extra bathroom, so I'm gonna take off a little bit of money for that. Um, but this one actually has a finished basement, so I'm gonna add a little bit for that. So basically, on a mass appraisal approach, that's how we value most of our properties in the province. And the residential property group is the, um, largest grouping in this category that we would value on the direct comparison approach. It's also, we also research the sales on the direct comparison approach. So we, um, as we're working through reassessments and as part of our daily activity, we are going out to properties, we're talking to both buyers and sellers to determine what, what was their thought process when they were looking at, um, buying and selling this house? Was there any undue influences? We're making sure that these are bona fide open market transactions to include our analysis so that the analysis isn't skewed in any way. So the next approach to value that we would use is an income approach to value. Um, this type of property is usually an office building, a shopping mall, an industrial mall, um, a medical building, something that's going to generate revenue. And it's important to distinguish when we're talking about generating revenue. We're looking at the revenue to the real estate. So we're looking at the leases that are written on the property and the revenue to that, to the owner of the property. So we're not looking at the business income of that property at all. We analyze the leases, we look at the expenses on the property, and we determine a net income. So if we're looking at a single property, we would look at the individual income information from that property. But we'd also compare it to similar other properties to ensure that we're capturing an appropriate market so that we're not, um, again, skewing anything in the valuation. We want to make sure that, um, the information that we are putting in in front of a tribunal or in front of the assessor or in front of the municipality is explainable in terms of what the market is, is, so we're not including the lease because he's my best buddy, I rented to him at a deal. We want to take those types of scenarios out of the equation. Um, we also look at sales on the income approach. And we do this and we, in conjunction with looking at the income stream on the property, to determine a capitalization rate. And a capitalization rate is basically a return on investment over time. So, and finally, we use the cost approach. So the cost approach we use where there's no, um, readily available income stream to a property or there's not a lot of sales that transact on properties. So that, um, we, there's no other easy way to figure out what that value of that property would be. So what we do is we figure out the land value through a direct comparison approach. We take that land, that value. And then we reproduce on our costing system, the reproduction cost of that structure. Then, of course, we apply, based on age, a depreciation to that cost, costed structure. And we also take into account any functional obsolescence or, uh, physical obsolescence to that structure to come out with a value for the structure. We put the two of those together and come up with a, a market, or a cost approach to value. So to test that, um, to make sure that we're.
Just one second. Uh, Counselor Soever?
Hey, um, going on those, um, three, um, different approaches. So farmland is, is assessed under direct comparison approach. And every year or every year cycle, we get asked to reduce the farm tax rate because their income stream is not keeping up with the land values. And we're seeing that particularly here in Gray County and South Gate and everywhere else. So when you own a mall, however, they look at your income stream. So the argument on farmland is always, well, my income's not keeping up to my assessment, so we need to do, go through a bunch of gymnastics and lower the farm tax rate. So why is the, why isn't farmland assessed on the income approach? And then we wouldn't have to go through these things.
So, uh, let's skip ahead a couple of slides. So valuing farm properties. Farm properties actually do not fall under Section 19-1, which is instructing us to value properties on the current value assessment. It's instructing us to value it under Section 19-5. And basically, the only thing that we're allowed to do on farm properties is to consider farm. farmland to farmland sales. So if your farmers are paying more as they transact with each other for those farm properties, those are the sales that we have to consider. We can't consider if the farmer sold to a developer, or the farmer sold to anybody other than another farmer. That's how the province directs us to value these properties. So it's covered under very, very specific legislation. So we're following the legislation, is the short answer to that question. So we're valuing those farms based on the use of farming, not based on any other consideration.
But, but how do you, obviously, a farmer, when they buy their land, although they may be buying it for farm purposes, how do you separate his motivation for paying twice what it traded for, say, five years ago? The, the farm income is still the same, but he's looking at the developers coming this way, and unless it's specialty ag, which they'll never get rezoned, but, you know, he's looking at it, like, it's, how does a person separate that motivation? Because we're seeing farm values increase far beyond what a farming use would justify.
So we do, do sales investigations on a hundred percent of our farmland sales, to try to discern what that is.
But you can't get into the person's head.
We have pretty extensive questions that we, we take the owners through, but you're right, you can't get into someone's head. So, if it looks like it's a farmer to farmer sale, it is included in the analysis.
So farmer to farmer, and not farmer to developer?
That's right, or to anybody else other than a farmer, so. Go on to the next. So residential properties, as Becky mentioned before, it makes up a huge portion of what we do. I think it's four point seven million properties in Ontario that we assess as residential We look at and collect information on about two hundred different factors on residential properties, but only about five major factors make up about eighty-five percent of your value. So we look at things like living area, the square footage of your home, the quality of the construction of the home, the lot dimensions, how big the lot is, the location of it, whether or not you back onto a golf course, or to an industrial property, would make a difference in terms of the value. And we also look at the age of the property, and we adjust the age of the property for, in taking into consideration any major renovations or additions. Some other key features that may affect your value, but not included in that eighty-five percent, are secondary structures, certain types of site features, such as whether or not it has municipal servicing, and waterfront, and whether or not it has year-round access or seasonal access. I guess the only thing that I haven't mentioned about the farm properties that I wanted to say is that we do know that Gray County is greatly affected by the number of farm properties. Gray County has seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine properties in the farmland tax class, which accounts about sixteen percent of your tax base. So regardless of our valuation approach, our work is ongoing. Part of our role is to keep up with ever-ongoing market trends, and changes to states and conditions of properties. Again, as we've spoken about a few times, is that we reflect the current state of condition based on a set date in legislation, so we adjust for time on that. So we need to keep the assessments current. We conduct regular inspections of properties, both individually and at a sector level. And we analyze information and data that is collected through various ongoing meetings, municipalities, property owners, and taxation representatives. We also do yearly data collection from property owners for income-producing properties, to ensure that information is all kept up to date, and we truly understand what is going on with the market. This work is all very important, because we are responsible to all of you to deliver an annual assessment role. And in that assessment role, we reflect changes to ownership, changes to state and condition of property, and updated assessed values and classification, which would include new construction, demolitions, and consolidations and severances. So if a property owner is to come to you and say, I'm not sure if I'm fairly assessed, the first place we would like you to direct them to is aboutmyproperty.ca. Aboutmyproperty.ca is an online application for property owners who want to compare their, their assessments with others in their communities. It's for both residential and for business properties. It's a secure, self-service application that provides property owners with access to their assessment information. This tool that we have, it's complete with mapping, it will highlight sales that are relevant to the time period and to the property, right on the map for them to see, they can click on it and get basic details of the comparables as they select it, they can favorite a bunch of properties, and it will guide them into knowing whether or not we've hit their assessment fairly or not. So if you, again, if you encounter property owners that want to explore further, if their assessment is fair, please direct them to that. But of course, at the local level, we're always ready to sit down and talk to taxpayers about their questions and concerns. As we sharpen our focus on delivering a successful assessment update for 2020, our commitment to you does not change. We understand the importance of quality assessments. We've been developed, we've developed an engagement strategy, which is modeled after best practices in the industry. We want to have meaningful conversations with all of you. We're compete, committed to keeping you informed on, on our day-to-day work, and the assessment update, and where those market trends are going. We're listening. We want to keep you informed and active in our conversations, especially the ones that affect your community. We are also committed to collaborating with all of you. Across the province, we understand that the communities you lead, you need everybody to do their part. Our part is the assessment, and our people take it very seriously. We are in your community, we are listening to you, and we remain committed to meeting your needs. So hopefully, the information that Becky and I have shared with you today is informative and answers some of your questions. I'd also like to introduce at the back of the room, Chris Ricketts. He is our newest member of our team, he's the new director of municipal stakeholder relations. And Anthony Fleming, he is our account manager out of the Owen Sound office. So MPAC spends a significant amount of time and effort working to enhance our relationships, working with provincial, municipal, and our taxpayers, all with the goal of moving our relationship from awareness to familiarity to trust. As mentioned earlier, our team lives and works in your communities, and we're happy to meet with you and/or visit the council to talk about our role in the assessment and taxation system. And hopefully, together, we can strengthen our communities. So thank you, and I will open it up to any remaining questions.
Council Suaver.
Thank you for that, Susan. And I'd like to compliment MPAC on the excellent work they've done in the Town of Blue Mountains. Over the first five months, they managed to find a hundred and sixty million in supplementary assessment. So that's, means an extra six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in taxes in Town of Blue Mountains, and it means an extra six hundred and twenty-five thousand for the county. So that's quite an amazing feat. Now, when you think about it, but then a lot of that is stuff that goes back to 2017 and 2018, so what can we do together better, so we don't miss that, and we don't have to catch it up next time? Because I know, I have some very unhappy taxpayers who are going to be getting a bill that says, oh, by the way, you were, you were zoned as vacant land, but you actually had your occupancy permit, and now you owe us three years on a two million dollar house. So that's about twenty, sixty thousand dollar tax bill, instead of their normal twenty. So maybe, if you could, because I would like everybody else, all the other municipalities, to get the same amount, because that's three hundred and twenty-five percent of our target for Gray County, according to the projection, so. Because the entire county had a projection of supplementary of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and we're at six twenty-five, just in the Town of Blue Mountains. So are we having the same result countywide?
So, how we perform our forecasting, we do our forecasting, and we review our forecasts fairly often, it's based on our available building permit information that's been transferred to us. Without the knowledge of the building permits that are out there, it's difficult for us to know what's going on in those communities. In blue, because we know, we knew that we, there was assessment missing, we'd actually dedicated a property inspector to picking up that, that growth.
Yes, thank you.
Council Columbus.
So you're suggesting that lower tiers-
Or Council Body.
Sorry, I-
I'll cut to you next. And so, all right, we'll go with, we'll go with you, you're on your feet. Go ahead. Go ahead, Council Body.
Yes, exactly. We, we need to be working with your building department and the planning department staff, so that we're getting the building permits on a regular basis. It's also included in our, our service level agreement, so we agree that if you provide us with that information, that we ingest it within thirty days of you delivering it to us. And we also promise, if we receive that information in that timely basis, that we'll have the revenue on the roll within one year of occupancy. And so it's important that not only we get the initial building permits, but we continually get updates from your building department on how that development is coming along, and when occupancy is given. And it's, you know, it's a geographically a very large community, so our assessors will target areas where they know that the buildings have been occupied, or are close to being occupied.
Council Columbus.
Mr. Warden, thanks for the presentation, ladies. My question, I'm not sure whether it's a classification, or, or where it falls into, but I'm wondering about assessing residential properties that are turned into B and Bs, Airbnbs, or short-term accommodations that are not necessarily assessed at the commercial rate. How, how does that work?
Those properties would have to come to our attention, that they're being used for a commercial use other than a residential use, and it depends on the level of use for the Airbnb that it's being used for. It would be very hard for us to determine on a site inspection if somebody's occupying that property for a two-week period. It would be no different than somebody tenending it out. So if, if they're actually conducting a business out of there, we would have to then show a proper rental stream, that this is what they're doing, in order to make that switch.
And I'm, I'm assuming that this is a topic of conversation in your communities, because I've heard questions from some of the other municipalities as we're visiting them, but we also had that question when we met with all of your planners. So one of the promises that we made to them that day was that we always have a day with MPAC for municipal staff, and we promised to bring them a presentation to help educate on the requirements for short-term accommodations, and, and how we assess different types of properties in the residential classes.
And then there was silence. Oh, Council Suaver.
You mentioned service level agreements, are those with the lower tier or the upper tier?
They are with every municipality, so upper tier and lower tier.
So there, there's a separate ones for each-
No, it's the same, it's the same agreement.
But it's signed up?
And it's not a signed agreement, there's no requirement for anybody to sign it, it's, it's a promise between all the municipalities, that this is the way that we will work with your municipality. And what we do find is there's fourteen different service levels, and we find that depending on the nature and the makeup of the individual communities, they concentrate more or less on different service levels, because some are more important to them than others, depending on, on the makeup of their community.
That's quite different.
It's all, all the same service levels, we report out on all fourteen, it's just that some municipalities want to concentrate their time, they spend with us, on, on different ones. And I would say, probably at an upper-tier basis, they're, they would be very interested in the growth, so some of the questions that you had earlier, as well. So they look at those growth forecasts at a cumulative, from the, as a whole, and, and all of you look at the growth for each of your individual municipalities, so.
Council McQueen, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, County Council, and thanks, Becky, Rebecca, for your presentation, and everyone else. Question, so, the assessment was based on January first, 2019, it'll be mailed out, what, August of 2020, somewhere in that neighborhood?
It's going to be May of, of 2020, when they'll be receiving those notices.
Yeah, I'm just basing back from your presentation, that was at AMO, so I'm just thinking back then. My question is, is, that gives you more time to make sure the assessments are correct. I guess my question, and maybe to Anthony back there too, is, or the other fellow, is, what kind of trends are you seeing for Gray County? Or have you got that far into it? Because I know my, 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 what do you, from, from the Town of Blue Mountains, has, has been saying that there's going to be some changes coming, and I just wondered, are you able to comment on that part yet? I know that this gives you a better opportunity to make sure those assessments are correct, and the, and the sectors are correct, but I just wondered if you see some trends that, to sort of lighten us, or not?
As the modeling is actually ongoing at the moment, I hate to put an actual number on it that will be repeated down the line, the assessments are going up anywhere from roughly forty to sixty percent, depending on the community that you're in, based on early trends, and I will caution you that it's very early. That's residentially.
Commercial, industrial, farm. Because I know, the reason I say, I know that the last go-around, the sixteen, there seemed to be, well, we know the agr, the, the farmlands were taking a big jump, and I think Gray County was seeing close to seventy percent of increase over that previous, 2012 assessment, but residential was, was a lot lower, it had seen that big rise previous, but-
So I don't think you're going to see the same increase in farmland, you will see an increase in farmland again.
More increases residentially.
More increases residentially.
Okay, Kim, and Council Matty, I know you're, you, you didn't have your, oh, you were itching or something, were you? Kim.
Just, you know, for the benefit of others in the room, Kevin, will you just make a comment about the relationship between assessed value and increases in assessed value, and where, what people's taxes are? Like, I don't want anybody to be connecting the fact that we're just going to see significant increases in, in assessed value, that nobody's taxes are going up forty percent, so.
We, when we do reassessments, it's actually just redistributing the same tax pie. You will see shifts between different communities and different properties types, based on how much they go up. But at the end of the day, if your municipal budget didn't change, you're still collecting the same revenue, it's just being shifted around, based on the redistribution of the assessment.
Kevin?
And you have to differentiate between reassessment values and growth values, right? As well, new buildings and stuff that's coming on, it's new assessment, is additional revenue available to municipalities? Or reassessment, it's like you said, take that pie and just redistribute it based on those new assessment values?
Okay, and Council Suaver.
Yes. The, so, when, when you do this appraisal, how many of the properties do you actually visit? Or is it all done by the multiple regression analysis? Like, what percentage of properties would actually get a, a visit?
So it depends on the different types of properties. In the residential property, probably about five percent of all properties get visited, based on the sales. Commercial, industrial properties get a much higher level of review, as do farms. The exact numbers I don't have in my back pocket, but I can get that to you.
So i, is that five percent of all homes, or five percent of all sales?
Sorry, five percent of all sales.
Sales, okay.
Yes, thank you for that correction.
I don't see anyone else, so with that, I will thank you for your presentation. Rebecca, I didn't know you were going by Becky, but she called you Becky, so.
My friends call me Becky.
Yes. I'm big on nicknames, so, you know, I'll be, I'll be calling you Becky. And Susan, and at the back of the room, Chris and Anthony, thank you as well, for attending, we very much appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much for having us.
Okay. We've been shortly over an hour, I think we should- I think we should take a few minutes for a breather. And we're going to be dealing with item six A. Speaking of MPAC, right? And Kevin's on deck, and I'll ask for a mover to put the item on the floor. How about Counselor Potter, seconded by Counselor Rob, Counselor Hutchinson, excuse me.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of walk through this, and this report here, and try to walk you through how my methodology of what my motion reads here. So, first, there was a notice, a motion presented on June thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, requesting that the County of Gray recover the cost of the MPAC services as a special service under three twenty-six-two B of the Municipal Act. And the lower-tier municipalities be building a manor. With each lower-tier municipality being built, the actual amount they would have been built if MPAC billed them directly under the legislative MPAC formula. So, this report provides background and information in a general overview of the provincial policy context surrounding MPAC's payments for services and the apportionment of the upper-tier levy amounts and special services. So, MPAC's property assessment service and support costs is under the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation Act. And MPAC's annual funding requirements are apportioned to each municipality, other than a lower-tier municipality, using a formula that reflects the proportionate relationship of individual municipalities or taxing authorities, assessed values, and total property count as compared to all of Ontario. So, these two indicators, so the amount of properties and then the, the assessment, total assessment for Gray County then are, are weighted each equally at fifty percent. And then that amount then comes up to a factor. And then that factor then is allocated against what MPAC's budget is for the, for that year that they have projected. So, for two thousand and nineteen, the assessment values for the County of Gray were about eighteen, about eighteen billion versus the almost two-point-eight trillion across the province. So, Gray County's share was point six-six-two-five percent. Of the property count, Gray County about fifty-seven thousand eight hundred, versus about five-point-three million for about just over one percent. Those two then are weighted equally at fifty percent, which gives that average of point eight-seven-six percent. That percentage then is multiplied by the impact, what the amount they need to recover for their budget, to fund their budget of two-hundred-and-ten million dollars, leaving Gray County's share of that levy of one-point-eight million dollars. The next page of my report then, how that is apportioned in the County of Gray, we include that in our, our general levy calculation. And that is apportioned then by weighted assessments. So, based on your tax ratios and assessed across, across each municipality. And that's then what we requisition to each local municipality. Just taking, you'll see the, in that first table, that the fifty-seven million dollars is the county's, what we asked to raise in, in two thousand and nineteen, based on the weighted assessments. I showed the percentage then that was coming from each municipality. And if you portion that based against the, the MPAC's bill of one million eight-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand, that would be the share that would be of that MPAC bill that'd be, be apportioned as part of the general levy to each municipality. The next table, if we use the, the formula that MPAC has to apportion it to municipalities and to the County of Gray, and we use that formula, and it was, and it was billed directly to the local municipalities, this, this formula would show, we're taking each municipality's, what their assessment is and what their number of properties are, and compare that to the Ontario, just like we did as a total for Gray County, but just broke it down by each municipality. That formula would result in that one-point-eight million dollars being distributed differently. And you'd see here that Town of Blue Mountains would see a reduction of about a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. And other municipalities then would be apportioned, would pick up some of those differences in, in that reduction. The County of Gray has included this in the, in the general levy, so I want to talk about the general levy next. And section twenty, two eighty-nine, three eleven in the Municipal Act contains specific direction as to how the upper tier shall be apportioned or allocated to the local municipalities. First, the general levy is defined as the amount the upper-tier municipality decided to raise in its budget for the year, under section two eighty-nine, on all ratable property in the upper-tier municipality. So, that really means is what, what have we decided to raise in our budget? Sec, secondly, section three eleven-three states that the upper tier must set rates which will be applied to each local municipality and all property assessable for upper-tier purposes. The implication of these two provisions is that the rates will be calculated, therefore, the taxes distributed across the county based on the distribution of assessment. This is further supported by the restrictions that are set out in this section, which state the rates must be set so that when they are levied on the applicable assessable, ratable for upper-tier purposes, an amount equal to the general upper-tier levy or special upper-tier levy, as the case may be, is raised. So, again, meaning your, your rates must raise what your estimate was. Second, and then the rates on the, on the different classes of property must be in the same proportion to each other as the tax ratios prescribed under section three oh-eight for the property classes as to each other, meaning that the taxes must be apportioned among the property classes and according with the ratios that we had set as part of tax policy. Then, thirdly, the rate for each class of property must be the same for each lower-tier municipality, meaning a single set of tax rates must be set for the entire upper tier for the general levy. So, we can't have a different tax rate for one municipality versus another. And that, so that's the provision of that. So, we, we have included this charge in our general, general levy, and then it is apportioned based on this legislation in, in the Municipal Act. So, then it raises the issue about special services of MPAC's billing or a special area rate. So, I'm moving into that next. And a special upper-tier levy or a special area rate may be used to raise additional amounts for specific groups of properties that receive a different type or level of service than others. For example, if the upper tier provided roadside waste collection to only four of nine local municipalities, the upper-tier municipality could choose to remove the associated cost from its general levy estimate and instead include as a separate levy estimate within the budget process. The tax rates to raise this amount would only be levied with that, within those geographical areas that are receiving that service. So, and that is under three twenty-six, where a municipal passed a bylaw on special services. And under that, you need to identify a special service, determine which of the costs of the municipality are related to that special service, designate the area of the municipality in which the residents and property owners receive or, or will receive an additional benefit from the special service that is not received or not received in the municipality. I find that is interesting to say. It says it designated the area of municipality in which the residents and property owners receive a different level of service. It doesn't speak to upper-tier or local municipalities receiving a different level of service. To further clarify, the special area rates cannot be just arbitrarily or general amounts that the municipality wants to build differently or portion differently. Section three twenty-six includes two definitions that help with the interpretation of this section. Benefit means a direct or indirect benefit that is currently available or will be available in the future. And special service means a service or activity of a municipality or a local board of municipality that is not being provided or undertaken generally throughout the municipality or being provided or undertaken at different levels or in a different manner in different parts of the municipality. So, I've stated in here, this is staff's interpretation that a special area rate does not apply to the billing of MPAC services. If a different method for MPAC's payments for services was to be wanted, so if, if council wished that these be directly billed to the local municipalities based on the formula that MPAC has, there is a process under that Impact Property Assessment Corporation, and it's under section twelve-three. And it details the process where, where that amount to be paid, excuse me, would require a bylaw approved by two-thirds of the directors of the MPAC board, and the minister approves that method of calculating the amount. So, based on my review of how the county's general levy needs to be apportioned, and then based on what, looking at that special service, that I do not believe it fits that criteria, I'm, my motion is that it continues to be considered that billing from MPAC that is billed to the, the upper tier of the county continue to be distributed and portioned based on the distribution of weighted assessment across the county. Try to answer any questions I can.
Kevin?
I'll turn it over for questions now. Maybe I can ask one to start, if you don't mind. Looking at your formula on page two of your report, page fourteen, that A plus B times C, I get A as the proportion of the total assessment, and I get B as a proportion of the total number of properties. I'm still struggling with C, though. Can you help me with that?
That's the, MPAC's corporation, what their budget they want to raise. So, that, you'll see that down there, MPAC cost recovery. MPAC's budget was two-hundred-and-ten million dollars. That's, that's that portion. So, that A plus B divided by two is our, our percentage of point eight-seven-six percent. That's multiplied by that C, the amount that their budget is.
So, it's the amount that MPAC sets?
Yes, that our board of directors set.
Okay, so, when it says, is the amount that the corporation considers the corporation being MPAC?
Being MPAC, that's right.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Counselor Soever.
Yes, and the, so, when MPAC came up with this formula, they equally weighted the number of properties and the assessment. And it seems to make a lot of sense, because, you know, obviously, each property needs a file, so there's a fixed fee. And then the size of the property and the value then would be the assessment. So, that would seem to be, you know, something that, that makes this fair. Now, if, but once we get it back, then I think Ruth, our treasurer, did send you some information on what this implies on a per-property basis. And by introducing this, does it not introduce, on a per-property basis, a huge disparity across the county?
This service, like many other services the county delivers, could, would generate the same. For example, if, what I, what I mean by that, if we took the land clomers in each municipality, and then we took our transportation budget, you would find that different municipalities are picking up a different proportion of the transportation budget. But we do not do that based back, and going back to how the general levy is to be apportioned. So, that's where I am with this. Same as we have, some communities have no social housing in them. How do I portion that? So, this was a way that these were put into, to a structure.
Any other questions? Counselor McQueen.
Mr. Warden, County Counsel, and to you, Kevin. Thank you for the report. A little bit different question in the sense of going back to the chart just below A, B, and C. Yeah, there we are. So, our cost is two-hundred-and-ten thousand to the county.
Sorry, that's, and that's MPAC's total budget.
Oh, sorry, total budget.
Two-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred-and-ten million is what they're...
Yeah, one-point-eight, sorry, one-point-eight.
Yeah.
How, my point is, is, has that been fairly consistent? Is it, have we seen big shifts? I can't recall, because I know you bring this forward. Is it like one or two percent every one year, two years? Or have we seen some big swings? I'm sure when they do the four-year assessment, I'm sure they're heavier that first year, and then it's sort of, and I, I'm sure that's a yearly budget of two-hundred-and-ten thousand blended over that. Maybe you don't have the answer today. Is that, has that been fairly consistent? Or have we seen some big swings even on the part of what we've been paying across the municipality, across the province, in the sense of their, their, their business of how they conduct themselves?
I, I would say generally what I've seen in my letter, we usually receive a letter in December and it states, this is what the board has passed in their budget. And it, they've been, I would say typically two percent or less in, in the last number of years that I, I would have to do more deep, go back to see if there was anything that was an anomaly. But that's my recollection. When I look at that dollar amount that we've, yeah.
Counselor Soever.
On the, your interpretation of the special service, B says being provided or undertaken at different levels in a different manner in different parts of the municipality. And I'd like to go back to the supplementary assessment. And, you know, I know that MPAC deals largely on building permits, as we heard earlier, and on service delivery based on the demands of individual municipalities. And, you know, fortunately for us, unfortunately for Gray County, we've been able to find a hundred-and-sixty million already in five months of missing assessment, largely refers back to two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. And so, you know, it really depends, the service level really depends on how hard each municipality pushes and, and provide, and how fast we provide information to MPAC. I mean, it's not their fault if we don't give them the information, then they fall behind. And so, really, how do you then say that B is not true? Because, because the interaction with MPAC is at the individual lower-tier level for the large part, because we, we are the ones that provide the information to allow them to do their work in an efficient manner. So, one of the things that defines a special service, and it doesn't say and, it says or, being provided or undertaken at different levels or in a different manner in different parts of the municipality. Now, I would hope that it would be provided at the same level, because then Gray County would have about two-point-five million in supplementary assessment this year, instead of the seven-thirty-eight. So, how can we say it's not being in a different manner when you see such disparities?
You're, you're really, yeah, it's, it's, and I, I'm following back on, it's the process, and it's also that this is available to the property owners across the county equally. If anyone has an issue with their property assessment, that service should be the same to anyone. The service is the same. It's not to the service to the municipalities. It's speaking to property owners and, and residents. So, I, and I, and then if, if we want to get into that, then how do I differentiate what that is? Because it does also, I have to determine the cost then. So, which, each municipality, I'm to, to, some find mechanisms to proportion based on that one-point-eight million dollars and what municipality and what benefit to the geographical area residence is getting. I don't have that ability. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I understand what you're saying. I, I see the outcomes. We, I, you see that in the tables. But I believe I have to follow what the act is saying to do this, and I don't feel this meets a criteria of a special service, and...
Okay. I think we're, when I read it, I read special service being a service or activity, and it says of a municipality, meaning the county, right? And then you can go to A or B. So, it's not really, I think you're looking, Counselor Soever, at the activity of the lower tier. Your example was talking about, well, the Town of the Blue Mountains is doing X type of an activity, and another lower-tier municipality may be doing something different. But I think Kevin is talking about it must be the service or activity of the county that is different in different municipalities. Am I correct in that assessment?
Service of MPAC, right?
Okay, any other questions? I think we're ready to call the question. So, all those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed that is carried? Okay. Adam Clerk.
Counselor Mackey?
Yes.
Counselor Burley?
Four.
Counselor Carlton?
Four.
Counselor McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Desai?
Aye.
Counselor Patterson?
Yes.
Warden Hicks?
Yea.
Counselor Columbus?
Yea.
Counselor Kivany?
Yes.
Counselor Boddy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Leary?
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury?
Yes.
Counselor Millen?
Yes.
Counselor Soever?
No.
Counselor Potter?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
The motion passes, ooh, I lost my, seventy-seven thirteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll move on to item six B, just dealing with the Canada, Ontario Community Housing Initiative and Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative Transfer Payment Agreement. Anne Marie's on deck. I'm looking for a mover to put the item on the table. Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Columbus. Anne Marie?
Thank you. So, I believe back in April, I bought, brought a report forward to council outlining the allocations we received through the Canada, Ontario Community Housing Initiative and the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative. This is a follow-up report with the transfer payment... This is a follow-up report with the transfer payment agreement from the province, and also outlining what we are planning to do with the funding that we are receiving. I did outline in my previous report and in this one that it is a significant decrease in funds that we did receive from the province compared to the last three years of funding, and these are also new programs. The Canada, Ontario Community Housing Initiative, known as COCHI, is looking at funds that can be used for affordability or for community housing units. We received ten thousand dollars for this year, and twenty, thirty-two for twenty-twenty, and a hundred and twenty-two for twenty-one. We were asked that we make a sustainability plan for that ten thousand dollars in front for the province, in which we were going to do. It does identify that the funds can go towards urban native housing, and we have five such units in our area that are in need of a little bit of repair, so we are going to fund some capital projects with that ten thousand dollars to whatever we can do for them. And with our Ontario Housing, Priorities Housing, this is sort of a continuation of the investment in affordable housing program that was under the formal provincial government. I have a list on twenty-one, or a chart on twenty-one, of what we plan on doing with the funding. We are looking at providing all of the funding, or most of it, over the next three years, I guess two and a half, because we're almost through two thousand and nineteen, to continue to support the build in Owen Sound. We did go out for an expression of interest. Owen Sound Housing Company had a plan to build ninety units of housing, the housing is affordable units and attainable units, so both of which are in need. Owen Sound is our largest waitlist, and we have a nonprofit that is willing to build. One of the changes that is along with this is that the OFI funding now for the rental build is to be geared towards nonprofits, and that if there is a private builder that is interested in building, we are to redirect them to the federal funds through the co-investment or the rental, rental build fund, which provides funding, which actually provides loans at a lower rate rather than actual grants, or there's a small grant portion to it of about five percent. So we know that we are in dire need of stock, so we are proposing to put the majority of the funding towards helping finish this build. We have thirty-six units built so far. We also, and I believe it was in the correspondence part of the report, have put in a letter to the province, our Owen Sound Housing Company has, asking that if there are any additional funds at the end of this year, that we be considered for them. We're right halfway through a project, we're shovel-ready, and we can certainly get an agreement by the end of the year for that. In previous years, we have been lucky enough to use some funding at the end of the year. I, it is my thought process that because there is a lot less funding available right now, that there might be some projects that just are not going to be able to go throughout the province because of the cut in funding, but we are ready for that. Some of the other programs, such as our rent supplement...
Can I interrupt you?
Sure, sorry.
For council's purposes, item five A is that letter?
Yes, sorry, thank you.
That supports what Anne Marie is saying right now.
And we did meet with Bill Walker also on that, so. So, our rent supplement, Ontario Renovate, secondary suites and homeownership unfortunately are not going to be funded for the next couple of years. With the Ontario Renovates and the homeownership, we do have a revolving fund, so for instance, with our homeownership fund, if someone has bought a home and they are moving, so maybe they were a small family when they bought the home, and now they need to move, we do get funds back from that. If they're not in the house within four twenty years, then that funding does come back. So if we provided a five percent down payment, then that five percent down payment comes back to us, and we put it into a pot. Right now, we have about forty thousand dollars sitting in that pot, and we, we do see that happening as families grow and the market's good, if they bought, you know, five or six years ago, giving us back that five percent, they're probably making a lot more than that on their house right now, so it's, it's not a big stretch to be asking for that back. So we're hoping that through the revolving fund, we might be able to provide a little bit of funding through the Ontario Renovates and the homeownership for the next couple of years. And that's it. Anyone have any questions?
Questions, council? So it's interesting to look at the, the chart on page twenty-one, and I'm noting rent supplement, Ontario Renovate, secondary units and homeownerships have zeros.
There's not much we can do with the amount of funding we've received.
Okay. Shall I call the question in? If there are no other questions, all those in favor, are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Keep moderating along, item six C, I guess we're on now. Moving into the land of Meaford. I'll ask for, Scott, you're on deck, I'll ask for a mover to put the item forward. Counsel Boddy moves, seconded by Counsel Kivany. Scott?
Great, thanks, Warden Hicks and members of council, so we've just got a brief presentation here. What we have before us is a, a proposal for an official plan amendment which would allow for a combined church and private school on the subject lands. The subject lands are located on Gray Road Twelve, roughly six kilometers west of Meaford, from the edge of Meaford, and the size of the property is about four hectares in size. What you'll see from just looking at the parcel mapping there, is that it is a mixture of lot sizes in the area, there's some residential lots, there's some farm-sized lots, and immediately to the west, forming the west, or the easterly boundary, sorry, of the subject property is the Big Head River. They are looking at this exception to the agricultural policies to allow for this new church and school, and for some of you that may have a lot of Mennonite, Amish populations in, in your municipality, you may be wondering why an official plan amendment is being triggered here. In this particular case, the, the congregation or parishioners of, of this proposed operation identify as, as a denomination of Mennonite, but they aren't of the older order variety which uses horse and buggy or primarily active transportation. They do use automobiles, and our current county official plan, as well as some of the provincial policies, specifically single out institutional uses in the agricultural designation whereby you have the horse and buggy community as the primary users. So in this case, an exception is being requested based on the fact that a number of their kids would still walk and bike to school, but they are users of cars, so to speak. The development is being proposed by a well and septic system, and it also requires amendments to both the zoning bylaw and the official plan in the municipality of Meaford. What you have before you is, is a picture of a proposed rendering of what it would look like. They're looking at four hundred and sixty-five square meters of building size approximately, there would be playfields and ball diamonds out back, there would be three, three classrooms in, in the school, and the church itself would have a separate room, and then there'd be a library as well. The, the proposed congregation for this operation, operation is rather small in size, there are currently about sixteen families. What they've shown here is a map with, with the red dot kind of in the center being where they're proposing the church and school, and, and the sort of purple dots being where their, their congregation lives. They've stressed to us over and over, this has been a multi-year process in terms of looking for a site, that they are looking for something roughly at the center of their community, because there would be no buses to this private school, and, and they do heavily encourage their, their kids to walk and bike to school in all seasons. So being on Gray Road Twelve, we're certainly going to want to talk to our, our friends in the transportation department with respect to access and safety issues should this proposal be, be supported in the future. At this stage, it's still early in the process, we've received the applications both at the county and the municipality of Meaford level. We will be looking to hold a joint public meeting on September ninth, but we haven't made any, any recommendations yet, because we are waiting on getting comments from agencies, as well as comments from, from members of the public, and, and at that point, we'd bring back a, a final report to this committee with some, some recommendations. That said, certainly be happy to hear any early thoughts the committee may have on this proposal, or considerations that you'd like us to investigate further. The recommendation at this stage is, is to receive the report, and then there would be the joint public meeting, as I mentioned, with Meaford down the road in September. So that's all I have at this stage, but certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Counsel Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, um, thank you, Scott, for the report. So the current exemption specifically notes horse and buggy parishioners or residents, and the current application, they are car drivers.
Yes.
So, in that respect, there no difference between Presbyterians or Catholics or any other faith community. So I'm wondering if we were to proceed with this, and I understand that this is early days, uh, this would set precedent for indeed any faith groups that are car drivers, or indeed any other proposals for institutional uses. Is that a fair statement?
It's, it's, it's a good point, a good consideration, it's something that staff have been wrestling with, and actually before this application was ever received, we reached out to colleagues at the province in Omaha and municipal affairs to see what else had been done around the province. The position that the proponents are putting forward is that they're an agricultural community, they're all farmers and live on farms, and they want their kids growing up in that community, and, and for whatever reason, they don't want to enter the public school system, and therefore, similar to what we've considered with the horse and buggy community, needs something that's close to where their congregants live. In this case, we have, as part of the, the rationale for the development, we've had, have asked them to consider alternate locations. Why can't you go in Meaford? Why can't you go in, in maybe one of the other smaller communities around? Why are these the suitable lands? And, and so that's what they put forward in their justification. We, we've reviewed it, we haven't come to any recommendations yet, but one of the other key informants in this will, will be the, the opinion of the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, because like you said, we do want to prioritize agricultural land production, protection, sorry, and, and we certainly don't want to be setting precedence unless there's valid justification for that, that could jeopardize the agricultural lands in the future, for sure. So it's a great, great point.
Counsel Mackey?
Thanks, Warden. Scott, could you put up the, the dots where you had all the different families? So one of the, you know, some of those dots are an awful long way for kids to walk. So if the justification is kids being able to walk and bike to school, I don't think you can walk or bike from Thornbury to Meaford on a regular basis to school. So, I'm not sure if that justification, you know, really holds pat for, there's a few dots certainly that are in close proximity, but the vast majority are outside of what I would consider reasonable.
Sure. Thank you, that, that's a good point as well. In this case, they've, they've, you know, I've shown you the map, they've given us some statistics behind the map to say that sixty-six percent of their congregation lives within six kilometers of, of the facility itself. What's reasonable to ask a, a kid to, to bike each morning and afternoon might be debatable, but your point is well taken in terms of, there's certainly some that are, are well outside. They've noted that they have about sixteen households, and, and as I said, sixty-six percent would be within six kilometers, but there's four more households that are more in the eight to ten or higher range, so it's certainly something that we'll be looking at.
Counsel Burley?
Scott, in, in beautiful George and Buffs, we have a church-school scenario at Midnight Corners, is that not similar?
Yeah, there are other facilities across, across the county that are similar. In most cases, the ones that I'm aware of in the rural areas are either public schools that have existed for a long time, or schools that, that the horse and buggy community are using. One of the ones they've cited that would be very akin to theirs is there's a facility that was just built on the edge of Salon in, in Gray Highlands, and that's one where it is a, a Mennonite church, but they're not horse and buggy users. Staff certainly have struggled with this, and, and we consulted with Michael, our Director of Legal Services, from a human rights and discrimination standpoint, to make sure that we're not prioritizing one belief system over another, and, and that we are being fair. And, and the key distinction here really is that method of transportation, but it is, you know, a, a fine line that I'm nervous about even discussing sometimes.
Counsel McQueen?
Scott, not to be an expert on old order Mennonites, but what happens if the order changed that they were no longer horse and buggy, and they had a church system and school? Like, and, and we see sometimes there's changes, I know in Gray Highlands, I've seen changes from completely horse and buggy to skid steers, to telehandlers, and you hear lots of things out there, they're only so many generations away, a big change, you hear all this kind of stuff. Does that change the designation after you go through? I mean, those are all, I'm just being the devil's advocate in the sense of not to be the expert, that's for sure.
And, and you raise an excellent point. When we look at, you know, zoning a new facility, the zoning bylaw never says, you know, thou shalt, you know, take your horse or bike to school kind of thing, it just says it's a church, or a school, or an institutional facility, so it's an institutional zone, and that's one of the things we've been struggling with on this one, and one of the reasons why we reached out to the public and the, or the province in the first place, was because it, you know, we don't typically zone by the user. And, and so similarly, you know, in the future, if this facility is approved, it could continue to operate as it is, or it could be bought by horse and buggy community, or, or as, as to your point, some of those existing facilities, say in Gray Highlands or South Gate, could be bought by, by non-horse and buggy users, and, and, you know, from a land use impact standpoint, the land use itself and the impact would be very similar, but we've chosen at the provincial and county level to, to make distinctions based on the method of transportation, even though we don't, you know, codify that in the zoning itself, so, so it's, it's very challenging.
Counsel Mackey?
Well, I just, you know... We have, Mr. Warden, we have a, a large Amish community in township of Chatsworth, and they have schools about every two concessions, so they are horse and buggy, the kids do walk or take horse and buggies, but the proximity to their homes is within two, two concessions, so, you know, those kids aren't having to travel that far. It's similar to the old schools that maybe some of us went to in the country, you know, every couple of blocks you had a one-room school. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had a good discussion. I'm going to call the question on the motion to receive this report, we are in early days, and to proceed to a joint public meeting. All, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We are going to move to item six D. And, oh, it is, okay, I had Brad and Barbara. I'm going to ask for somebody, okay, Counsel Robinson moves, seconded by Counsel Woodbury. And Barb, you're on.
Mr. Warden, good morning, County Council. I do have a staff report before you that I'll be presenting, but I do have Children's Services Manager Barbara Arbarkle with me as well. I think Brad Noble, our Planning Data Analysis Coordinator, could be in the room. Very busy days, and just to advise that this staff report has developed out of a request that came to County Council. So I'm sharing with you today some information about how each year Gray County provides funding for a wide range of community organizations for services that are delivered throughout Gray County. In two thousand and eighteen, and it's estimated that nonprofit organizations receive just over a million dollars in funding from the county for initiatives which align with our strategic goals. Formally adopting a consistent approach to handling these requests within the budget process will enhance transparency, fairness, and public awareness of how our funds are being used. So just a little bit of background, some of our departments are very much heavily involved in funding community organizations, while lots of others are not, and we needed to do some research. So in two thousand and eighteen, finance, social services, housing and planning provided the most funding to support nonprofit community organizations and groups. So currently, nonprofit community groups may receive funding through one, a specific departmental budget item as part of a county budget, certainly social services. Number two, as a special request, we've seen that come through, and number three, both, both avenues, through budget process and through special request. So that created a bit of an ad hoc situation, and we were quite well aware that it was a, a difficult decision for council, and so it resulted in some convoluted processes for community organizations, county departments, and for council when making decisions. So, of course, recently we have had a request from Beaver Valley Outreach, and that led to us to decide once and for all that we need to take a look at the process. So we took some time to do an environmental scan, and we provided you a bit of information here, we needed to look at which nonprofit organizations are receiving funding right now, which funding, how much funding is being provided, and how jurisdictions outside of Gray County provide their funding. We looked at some like-service system managers and looked at what they're doing. So it revealed that there's a lot going on, a lot of different ways of doing business, especially, certainly in lower-tier municipalities, they tend to have more of a formal process because they have a far fewer nonprofit organizations asking, but they also have a small... But they also have a smaller budget to work from. And certainly in upper tiers, they are not as defined in their processes, probably because they have many more folks asking. And I think they look at one-offs specifically. So in general, the formalized processes that we looked at were, number one, they were a public-facing annual application process. Number two, they were associated with an internal policy that deals with nonprofit funding. Number three, there was an ability to establish a set total for all that funding. Number four, there was set criteria to evaluate. And number five, there was a report back. So that being said, it becomes very much an administrative process. And so what we're requesting or recommending today is that we adopt and communicate eligibility criteria for projects and organizations. Number two, we consider that there be a consideration of a funding request and that it be directed to the appropriate department. Number three, if the eligibility criteria is met, are met, and the project is considered to have merit, a report then is prepared seeking council endorsement to include in the annual budget. And then four, if the project is deemed ineligible or without sufficient merit, the requesting organization retains the ability to have a delegation and speak directly to council. And then number five, a final decision on the funding is made when the annual budget is passed. So for eligibility criteria, we looked at that, first of all, they need to be not-for-profit corporations, registered charities, and volunteer groups to be eligible. Number, again, considered by the appropriate county department. Number two, that the applicants must be in compliance with all conditions and requirements under the Human Rights Code and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Number three, that eligible applicants must be located in Gray County or must serve a Gray County population in its catchment area. Number four, that eligible applicants must be able to demonstrate financial need and how the proposed project would provide benefits to Gray County residents in line with the resources that they're requesting. We also have a list of ineligible criteria, very much opposite to what I've just read. So non-project-related expenses, and we've given a list of them. Projects related outside Gray County. Anything that's related to travel and accommodation expenses. Manufacturing business or other industrial or commercial enterprises. And projects that are canceled, so funds must be returned. And we did align our criteria for eligibility with the Municipal Act. So we are looking to ensure that we're in compliance with the delivery of services that happen here at Gray County. Okay, I'll turn that over for any questions.
Questions, Council? Counselor Soever?
Yes, thank you for that report. And we struggle with the same thing in the town of Blue Mountains. Is there any move toward like establishing a form which people, so that we can compare these things to show, like, what we've done previously is how much money did they get last year? Well, I think the question is more, what did they do with the money that we gave them last year? So we're putting together a form that, you know, says, okay, how was the money used last year? You know, how many volunteer hours did they attract? Because obviously, we can get a huge uptick on our funding if they have a lot of volunteers. Because we get things from people who have only like one volunteer, and you're going like, well, that's not, you know, really creating a lot. And then, how many people did they reach? And also, did they provide a service to the community that the town does then not have to apply? And I think the same goes for Gray County. Because obviously, with things like BVO, then it, we don't have to have a storefront in the town of Blue Mountains because they direct people to our social services and other centers. So, you know, I'm just thinking that, you know, is there a move to creating a standardized form with some numbers so people can look at these things objectively and say, you know, yes, they reached out and they touched 4,000 people last year, and we only spent $1,000. Well, that's pretty good. But you can only do that, obviously, if you have hundreds of volunteers. So I'm just wondering if there's any move to creating some kind of an evaluation form.
So thank you for that question, through you, Mr. Warden. We are, that's one of the reasons we wanted to send them back to the appropriate department. Because at that level, there is much more engagement within that community. And they can do exactly what you're suggesting, where they can look at what's the value for those dollars spent? What other services are in that community? We don't want to duplicate. There isn't enough room and enough money for all of that. How can we align what the process is for that organization, perhaps with another organization, so that their capacities are stronger? So that was one of the reasons we went back to that. We did take a look at, certainly, we have lots of reference materials, and we can share those with you and your team if you like, what's out there. And it is heavily administrative. We were looking at this as more of a streamlined process at the staff level to ensure that there is ongoing engagement. And that sometimes the organization isn't even aware that the county is providing those services or has alternative or other options. So it keeps that communication open too between the organization and the staff. So we didn't define it as yet, but I think what you'll see coming out of this is back, we have a very limited budget within each of our departments, and we'll need to do the exact evaluation that you're talking about when we determine what the asks are. And then going into the next budget year, what that could look like. And whether some that we currently fund are no longer something, you know, we need to put people on notice if that's the case. If there's eligibility criteria that's not being looked at. This helps to formalize for staff as well. You're welcome.
Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question for you to staff, to Barb, is is there a possibility for lower tiers to work in partnership with Gray County? And the reason I ask that is Gray Highlands already has a system that's in place. And we had to deny one of the requests because we did not have enough funds to do it on our own. And it was in relation to daycare and having childcare at one of our facilities. And due to liability issues, we could not afford to do that. So my question is, is there a possibility for lower tiers to work with the county on something like this? And further, I guess, also is the question of, should the county really be getting into not-for-profit granting when lower tiers, most lower tiers, are doing their own system? Is this something that the county should stay out of? And sort of work, let lower tiers do their own programs?
Barb, I'm going to let Kim respond, and then if you have something to add after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. I think what we were trying to achieve with this report is really to put some formality and process around something that's already happening. I don't see us really undertaking a call for applications. We already have relationships with these service providers and are working with them. But I think it's important that we're very transparent and upfront about what's eligible and what's not eligible in any of these relationships. And that's what we're trying to do. So, no, I agree with you 100%. We don't need to get into this in a big way. Specific to the childcare question, though, I think I would encourage your folks to talk to Barb's without knowing the specifics.
That would be my other comment, is we would be open for that dialogue. I suspect what happens is folks that are seeking resources are just looking in whatever avenue they can, and they're reaching out. And I don't know that it's intentional to duplicate. I think they're just trying to see, to leverage whatever they can. But I look forward to that dialogue.
Counselor Potter?
Just, I think, following up on Counselor Desai, I just would like to see something to make sure that everybody's not double-dipping and going to the same taxpayer to get $2 instead of one. There are organizations that do work that really helps the county. There are others that are working more on a local basis. I just hope we wouldn't get into a slippery slope where we start funding the same groups all the time.
Yeah, agreed.
Counselor Potter, it might be as simple as on the application that they indicate if they have requested or received funds from a lower tier. And that would certainly become part of the assessment by staff, right?
Yep. And I think the other piece is when we take a look at the following year, we would wonder how else, where else do they go for money? What else have they done? How did they get to their outcomes? And because again, part of what we try to do is ensure that they're local, they're serving local residents, so locally, what is happening on the ground? And what do we need to know as well at the county level? So that's well taken. Thank you for your point.
Okay, Counselor Soever?
Yes, just following up on that point. We have actually done that, well, we are in the process of adding that to our form is where are all your sources of funding coming from? Because we get a lot of requests from neighboring municipalities like Gray Highlands and stuff. And we go, well, it probably is serving some of our people, but we want to know if Gray Highlands gave them some money.
We have a very open financial assistance program process. I invite you to look into it.
You went for the bait, didn't you? Couldn't see you reinbated there.
I tried, I tried very hard not to fall for it.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Barb, I was interested in the eligibility criteria on page 32, specifically number two, which references compliance with the Ontario Human Rights Code and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Not that I'm opposed to people being in compliance, but isn't that sort of a given? Maybe it's like saying you shouldn't break the law?
I think it's come out of some of the other reference materials that we reviewed. I think it's just another statement to say that we believe in this and that if there's going to be any funding that we're affiliated with, then we need to ensure that you're in compliance and you understand what your obligations are.
Okay. I'll call the question then on the motion. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried.
Thank you very much, Barb.
Okay, we are making very good progress. We'll deal now, Heather, I see, is stepping up to the podium. We're dealing with item E, 6E, and the Healthcare Funding Task Force. I'll ask for a mover, please. Counselor Burley moves, seconded by Counselor Mackey. And Heather, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Warden Hicks. The first report is the, oh yeah, I'll let those two leave, the Healthcare Funding Task Force. And this report is being brought forward as a result of the notice of motion from the May 23 meeting requesting that this task force be established to develop a policy for healthcare spending related to the requests that are received by Gray County. The CIO and I have completed a draft terms of reference, which was attached to the report, just to provide an outline of the roles and responsibilities of this task force. The task force establishment is a result of questions arising to the county as to how the county will deal with two requests we've received so far this year. One from the Collingwood Hospital for $3 million over 10 years for its replacement of the hospital. And from Gray Bruce Health Services for $400,000 over two years for the MRI replacement. Currently, we don't have a policy in place on how to deal with these requests. And historically, it's come to County Council on a request-by-request basis. Currently, Gray County puts one-half of 1% of the county's general levy aside in the annual budget for healthcare spending for 2019. That amount is $277,300, which doesn't cover both of those requests to date. The main role of the task force will be the development of a policy for healthcare spending that can be applied to these requests from stakeholders when they are received. It's anticipated that the task force will work with key stakeholders in the healthcare field within our communities to assist in the development of this policy and to garner effective insight into the area. The task force will include four members of council plus the warden. And it's my hope that we would be able to have those meetings prior or after council to just have you stay for one day and not have you make special trips in for that. So before you is the recommendation with four spots for members. I have had four counselors interested in sitting on this committee. Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Clumpus, Counselor McQueen, and Counselor Millen, along with Warden Hicks. That's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for anyone? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Heather, how broad is the term healthcare? Is that, you know, we've talked about the requests have been primarily from hospitals, but will it be expanded out to, you know, our children's mental health and to our adult mental health as far as funding requests? I know the residents, you know, on sound through Keystone always has a deficit. So is there an opportunity for them to make a request?
We've always looked at it from typically a hospital standpoint, but we've also had requests, and Kevin, can you correct me if I'm wrong, from the Chapman House, the hospice in Gray County. Those are the ones that we've typically looked at, is hospital and the hospice. Am I correct, Kevin?
Yeah, in the hospice case, the criteria for that one percent was on construction of hospitals. Didn't fit that criteria, so it wasn't funded from that fund or reserve. If council chose that it was funded from a one-time funding reserve, that's how they got around that one. But that's, that fund was strictly set up for the capital construction of hospitals.
So, Mr. Warden, our task force may look at healthcare as a broader, from a broader perspective?
Kevin?
Kim?
If I can, I think what we've been approached about has been very project-specific in the time. We're going to build something, we're going to make something. Whereas if I'm understanding where you're going, it's more about a shortfall in resources to provide services on an ongoing basis. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, it is. But certainly, the same could be argued about the MRI. It's a shortness of resources to provide, you know, the MRI. So depending on what the parameters of your definition is.
Yeah, because we wouldn't be, I guess, in my mind, we weren't providing the funding to operate the MRI. It was to procure it from the beginning. But this is the kind of thing and information, I think, that can come to this table by, you know, the various experts, if you will, and the leaders in the field that will come and speak to the people at the task force to try and inform how the system is working.
Southeast Gray providing services, you know, in Chatsworth, Mark, Gray Highlands, and Southgate, they're certainly, you know, they have, you know, capital costs also. It's not a hospital per se, so I'm just wondering what the scope's going to be. Thank you.
And I think that the committee or the task force can certainly, that will be one of the first things, is developing that scope. Yes.
Any other hand, so on the motion then, as I understand it, to receive your report and that we would be appointing Counselors Hutchinson, Clumpus, McQueen, Millen, and the warden. So on that, could I get all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay. And now we're on F. And still with you, Heather, I could get a mover, please, to put the item... This is with respect to compensation for attendance at events on the warden's behalf. Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Heather?
Thank you, Warden. As most of you know, Gray County receives a numerous request for the warden to attend special events, be that Remembrance Day services, Santa Claus parades, ribbon cutting, et cetera. When the warden is unable to attend, he or she requests first that the deputy warden attend on their behalf. And if they are unable to attend, then he requests other members of council to attend. Currently, council members are compensated for their mileage only to those events. The events are typically social in nature and generally less than half of a day. It would be rare for an event to extend past the six hours, which is the cutoff for full day per diem and half-day per diem to be applied. It's recommended that for those that attend an event on behalf of the warden, that they be compensated for a half-day per diem at the current rate of 118.82 per event when you're attending, I mean, an event outside of your home municipality. If you're going to be there in your home municipality anyway and you're representing the warden at that time, there won't be compensation for that. But if you have to, for example, go from Southgate to Georgian Bluffs, there would be compensation for that. Because this has been happening since the beginning of the term, the report also recommends that it be retroactive to the beginning of the term. As noted in the report, this was not included in the council budget at the beginning of the year. So there may be a small deficit. I don't anticipate it's going to be very much. I think it'll be minimal. I think it'll be, uh, minimal, um, at best, but, um, I wanted just to make you aware of that.
Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of weeks ago, I filled in for the warden, uh, in Hepworth and staff contacted me for my mileage and, uh, I turned that down because I was there on behalf of Mayor Boddy. So how do we handle that moving forward? Like I, I don't think I would want the $118 if I know I'm going to be there anyways on behalf of the mayor.
Heather?
Absolutely right, Counselor O'Leary. If you choose not to, um, take the mileage currently, if you choose not to take the mileage, that's your decision, that would be the same, um, as the per diem. If you choose not to do that, that's certainly your decision.
Counselor Mackey?
I guess my question is why is this coming up now? Why has it not been an issue in the past and? Because, you know, typically you can reach out to someone from that home community and hopefully they would be able to go and represent the warden if he's not able to attend and we could save the money that way as opposed to having someone from Southgate travel to Hepworth, for example. That doesn't seem to make sense to me and it's not a, a good use of taxpayers' dollars.
So thank you for the question and that was, it was a good question because that's something that we talked about when, when, uh, Kim and the warden and I met about this. And it seems that the requests for Gray County to be a participant in a number of local events has, um, increased. We, if the chart is in the report, um, the highest we have seen to date is 2015 where we had 16 for the full year and as of June of this year, we've had 11 already. Um, so it's just, it's being brought forward for council's consideration because we are seeing an increase in these requests coming and basically, um, having Gray County represented at events, um, you know, boosts who we are and what we do and gets our, our, um, the county out into those communities.
If I may, I think the one thing that the, the chart on the second page of the report doesn't capture is the, the overall, and what you're speaking to is the number of events overall. The fact that alternates are having to, uh, you know, be asked to attend some of these things in no way takes away, but the reason why in all those cases is that you can't be three places at once. And I think that's what we've heard and certainly since I've been here, this question of, of compensation for time has been a recurring question, um, that, that I've heard, whether it's events or it's emergency management training where we often have a halt, a couple of alternates that need to participate in that as well. So it has come up time and again.
And will continue to come up, I'm sure. Counselor Mackey?
Well, I still believe that most of the events, either the mayor or the deputy mayor from the local municipality would be attending and would be able to bring greetings from, from the warden.
And in those instances?
There's very few that I can see the county being invited to that the, the lower-tier municipality wouldn't be participating in. So I think we can get around it. You know, um, Kim raises a good point about alternates for emergency management and that might need to be looked at separately in, in my opinion.
That is, that, um, when Marlee McCleavy, McCleavy brought her report earlier this year, um, seeking alternates to the warden for emergency management purposes, that was included in there, that they are being paid, um, compensated for their time here for training.
Counselor McQueen?
Mr. Warden and to you, Heather, um, I think exposure is very important and I'll say this in the sense that we see a number of times we go to events and we see our MP and our MPP have a certificate. I would like to see us more having a certificate from the Gray County along with the lower level who present those certificates because, you know, those events aren't just on-the-cuff events. Those are important events to those organizers or whoever's putting it together. And to have that certificate, I think, and I don't know how that process works. I guess the request is made if the warden or his alternate can, can show, but I think having that certificate means a lot. And I know we try to do as much as we can in Gray Highlands, this myself, as the mayor and stuff like that, but there always seems to be that protocolers, MP, MPP, warden, mayor or alternate. And you see sometimes, you, you see those, like I'm thinking back to, uh, the event just was like Gray Gables not long ago. I know you were there, Mr. Warden and, and, uh, some kind of councils and stuff, but again, there is, I think there's that protocol thing that I think exposure and showing that the county is out there is very important along with those certificates. And I'm not sure what the protocol is on the certificates. I mean, that's something, Mr. Warden, that you want to talk about further with staff on that because, uh, you know, you, you see it that, uh, more prominently with our local MPP and MP, they're at, it's there. And then those, you go to, but I've been into events where it's like 30 years and 25 years, the 25-year thing's still hanging on the wall, the certificate. So, you know, like it does mean a lot to those people, not only the, the event of folks speaking, but those certificates and it shows that, and it shows that the county's taking interest. And I think that's, that's very important because I think we're a little bit behind in the times of showing that interest, showing we're there, right? It's encompassing, that's the big part of Gray County.
It's a good point and, uh, we have issued a few certificates and I think in those instances, they were actually requested, uh, but I think you do raise a, a very good point. Yeah. Um, did I see another hand? Oh, Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. Mr. You know, Counselor McQueen talks about, you know, responsibilities of different levels of government and certainly, you know, both our, our MP and our MPPs try to get out to certainly every activity they can. They're not compensated for that. I mean, they have their, their salary. That's, they do that as part of their role. And I think, you know, we as elected officials, when we signed up for the task, we took some of that responsibility on to get out to social events. We don't have to do them, but we do them because we, we want to and choose to. Um, you know, there's other compensations, it's, you know, that we, uh, that we get for it, you know, through our, our regular salary. So, I, I'm really leery about this one. Um, just, there are some things that we're doing because of the position that we chose to, uh, stand elected for.
Counselor O'Leary?
Counselor Mackey brings up a good point. I, I think we all bring greetings on behalf of the MP or the MPP and we don't get $118 or $18 for doing that. We, we do this all the time. We're, you know, even our counselors fill in for the mayor. I fill in for the mayor. I, I don't get extra money for doing that, but I certainly understand the mileage. If you're out, if you're outside the municipality or you're traveling a long distance, then, then that's different. I, I see the mileage point, but not the $118.
Heather?
And, and I think this report was brought forward because we have had numerous questions over the last several months about it. So it's being brought forward for discussion at this horseshoe and, um, for, for committee or council to make a, a, a recommendation on, on what we should be doing.
I can tell you that, uh, um, the requests are significant and, um, I, I then get a little bit sensitive because do I bother to ask the deputy, um, warden, uh, when I know fully well that that takes, uh, you know, him away? He's not at the table here right now, but I'm, I'm, I'm leery about it because I'm, I'm knowing fully well that that takes him away from his ability, uh, to do, um, what he would be doing ordinarily. I, I respect that, uh, yes, we all sign up knowing that there's going to be a certain level of, uh, uh, commitment and I think we all do that. Uh, but in this case, uh, I gotta tell you, it's, it's starting to get, uh, pretty heavy. Like there are quite a few times where I'm saying, geez, you know, um, I, I don't know that I want to ask him because I feel badly that I'm asking somebody knowing fully well that they're going to be taking up three, four, five hours, uh, going to a particular event and, uh, being there and, and doing a duty and, and not receiving anything for that. So that said, uh, Counselor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment I'd like to make in response. Recently for Canada Day at Big Bay in Georgian Bluffs, uh, both the mayor and deputy mayor and our counselors were there, but we also had invited the warden and the deputy warden came in your place. And I think that's quite a commitment on his part to travel that far and to not be paid the extra for it because it was important to have the county represented at that function as well as the local municipality.
We've had a good discussion, I think. I'm gonna call the question on the motion.
Could we have a recorder vote, please?
Sure.
Can you wait a minute?
Heather will. Okay.
Counselor Mackey?
No.
Counselor Burley?
Yes.
Counselor Carlton?
Yes.
Counselor McQueen?
Yes.
Counselor Desai?
Yep.
Counselor Patterson?
Yes.
Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Counselor Clumpus?
Yes.
Counselor Kivany?
Yes.
Counselor Boddy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Leary?
No.
Counselor Woodbury?
Yes.
Counselor Millen's gone. Counselor Soever?
No.
Counselor Potter?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Motion is carried 5529.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McQueen?
Can we develop a, a, a process or protocol on, uh, people making requests for certificates from the county? Is it on the website or a process? I think that's a lockout.
Can you leave that with us? I, I do think it's a very, uh, good suggestion and, and something will come back. I, I, a good comment, a good, good point made. Okay. I think that's it. Is there any other, uh, business?
Counselor Warden, I have some staff. Uh, last week I received a call with regards to, uh, two individuals that were finding themselves evicted or homeless and they were trying to search for a situation of, of, uh, taking care of their situation and I said, well, contact social services at the county. I'm not sure if you did that, but I've never really been, uh, poised with that question before and it was a circumstance where there were an older couple and the, the gentleman was, uh, suffering, he had cancer and so where they were living for a number of years, uh, ended up finding they were evicted and, uh, were in a situation where they had nowhere to go. And I have just, I know there's a quick question. I said 211, uh, social services, talk to the county. Just asking if anybody else can draw that, so maybe we can answer it.
Yeah. Um, I can tell you that we've had, uh, a similar situation in Hanover and, uh, because people didn't know the services that existed, some of the, um, pastors and priests were actually putting up their Visa card to put somebody into a, um, you know, a motel, uh, for the night and we had to meet with them to educate them, let them know there is, uh, a system in place and, and 211 would be the perfect thing for, for people. Barb?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, that, uh, this situation happens quite often, actually. I, I'm, I'm, it's unfortunate that, that you're getting the calls directly. Mayor McQueen?
They didn't work.
Okay. 211 was exactly the right answer. Um, they are affiliated with all of our resources and, um, they are aware that, um, the Y Housing Program, we fund, uh, an actual worker, um, and it's a number that can be called, uh, there's after-hours as well, um, and they will work with specific, um, circumstances like a temporary, sometimes putting people in hotel rooms, motel rooms until something more secure can be located. Um, and they would also look at the situation, so, uh, the unfortunate health circumstances of that particular couple, um, they would look for any resources that they could find to provide supports to, like the outreach, outreach programs that exist. So, I, I appreciate that you, um, connected them with, uh, 211. We are bringing 211 back for our presentation this fall, um, so that you can see the services again that are provided. We're very fortunate, actually, um, we do a great job of promoting their services because we can't do it all ourselves as frontline workers. So we are the highest, um, referral, uh, area in our region, in central region. And that means we're doing good work, that we're not, we're, we're, there's some gaps, but there's definitely, uh, a lot of work happening and that's because of the kind of referrals that you're giving as well. So thank you for that. And you can always be in touch with us as well. Certainly email, we have, um, our tools and we would be back in touch and we would, uh, connect with the appropriate resources. Okay?
Okay. Is there any other, other business? Seeing none. Any notices of motion? Oh, sorry. Uh, there was, there was other, other business. I apologize, Counselor Mill.
I was gonna ask to adjourn.
Oh, no. Once again, you're slightly ahead of the rest. Um, is there any notices of motion? Seeing none. Uh, Counselor Mill, Mill moves that we adjourn. Counselor Burley seconds it. He was slightly quicker than you, Counselor Desai. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.